Completely changed the design of the project at this stage.
Because based on the people that I'm talking to, we seem to have at least a third of the votes. And it's my understanding that the project has to come back to town meeting for takings, votes for.
Correct, it will, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. Just to give a little detail on some things that Tara touched on, mostly to update the board. I'm the liaison from Green Acton to the town. And I just want to say that, you know, at least so far, I think the town's been very receptive, whether it having been the steering committee changing the time of their meetings to evening to make them more accessible. I've met with Andy Brockway, with the planning department, with John. You may know, you've probably seen that Green Acton has a letter expressing some support for the project, you know, overall, the idea of Kelly's Corner being walkable and more accessible and more sustainable. We love, as you probably know, the concerns expressed in the letter have to do with at least the idea or the perception that the plan is overly car-friendly and that it is not tree-friendly enough. But what I'm happy to say is that it sounds like, you know, from what we've heard, you know, the town is taking our concerns seriously. We've asked for a response to our concerns by Thanksgiving, which John has promised us. I know that Jim Snyder Grant and myself are going to be meeting with Katie by the end of the month as well and, you know, discussing this. So we do hope that the town continues to take, you know, these concerns seriously, you know, but I also want to, you know, congratulate the town as well on trying to prioritize things like accessibility. I know as a member of the Commission on Disabilities, the concern about the surfaces is very warmly received. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, anybody else? I'd say no may else. John, do you want to vote from members or do you, did you just want kind of a sense of the board?
A vote would be great.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion then?
I move that we accept the items, the recommendations one through four in Kristin Gichard's memorandum to the manager of October 12th.
Okay, John moved and Joan seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great, excellent. Okay, and then up next is the next draft of the Town Environmental Sustainability Policy. So this is back again. Sorry, I'm having issues writing and speaking tonight. So as everybody remembers, we've been talking about this for a while. We had a draft of the sustainability policy. We updated, we sent that around for comment to all of the boards and committees. We received a number of comments. We had a discussion at the board level of those comments and board comments. And then I provided the updated draft of that, which we reviewed at a number of meetings ago. And then I made some minor updates based on comments from board members at that meeting and then sent this out again to all of the boards and committees. We also put a form, a link to it on our website with a form where people could submit comments back to us. And so we are here tonight to review any remaining comments and see where we are for, think we're at the point of being able to vote this tonight or if there are a few more changes that we, people think we need to make before we vote on the policy. So in the packet is the latest version of the sustainability policy as well as the comments that we received from individuals and a couple from, one from the Design Review Board and one from the Acton Community Housing Corporation. So I think those were the only two committees that responded. And I'll just say that looking through the comments from the public, there's a lot of support, which was great. And then some of the comments were related to, I think there's some, again, confusion or we were trying to keep the policy itself not having any specific goals within it because the idea is that those will change over time. And so there were some comments that were related to specific goals or things that we should do, like expanding our swap shop. There were actually a couple mentions of that, which was interesting and which I think is great. But it's not really something that we were planning to put in the policy itself, but that would be potentially a goal for one year that would come out of the policy as the policy directs us to create goals every year and then report on them. There were some, let's see, because there were some that were, there was a comment, there were one or two comments about including the Acton Water District or the Acton Water District Commissioners in number 2.2 of the policy, which includes a list of people that would be involved in setting the, developing and setting the goals for each year. So right now, those include the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, Town Staff, Town Boards, Committees and Commissions, community groups and members of the public. But as the Acton Water District is not a town board or committee or commission or really a community group, there was a request to add that, add them specifically, which made some sense. And there were a few comments on maybe things to add in the kind of appendix of existing initiatives that we have going already, which is always good to add to what we are, what we've already done to take credit for that. So those were the main things that I saw coming out of that, but I just wanted to get reactions or comments from members of the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that this latest draft is a big improvement over the first one. I still, you know, I know there's a lot of work that's gone into and a lot of comments, but I am, I'm still concerned that this is going to become a policy and people are actually supposed to be guided by it and know what to do. And I, I feel as if it still needs to be more concrete. I'm still a little concerned about the term sustainability, the definition, if people under really understand what we're talking about. But, and then I was a little bit concerned about having, having it be a little bit too sort of mandatory on the town staff or in everybody in the town sort of saying you are, you have to take into consideration all of this and everything that you do. I thought, I thought it, it could be a little bit gentler. It is a policy and it's understood that you're going to be aiming to comply with the policy to the extent that it's practicable. But I, you know, I thought that there needs to be a little bit more flexible, a little bit of flexibility incorporated so that you don't, you know, you don't give town staff especially because they're the ones who are going to be doing a lot of the implementing. I think that everybody's going to be involved, but we know who actually is going to be doing the implementation. They have to be able to deal with these things in real life terms and, and I don't want people, I don't want the idealism in some corners to sort of eclipse the fact that people are dealing with real life requirements. The other thing that I thought could be a little bit clearer, and I know there was an effort at the beginning, but it's explaining why we need this policy. And there was some explanation about how we're all part of the world and we have, you know, what we do has an impact. But I thought that there are people in town, I know that, that will say, so what's in it for us as residents of Acton? And I think that there's a way to explain that, but it just needs to be said. I mean, it's just where, you know, when we care about the environment, it makes for a better quality of life for all of us here, among other things. And there can, can be some sort of fiscal benefit, although we're trying to focus on environmental, but the fact is that caring for the environment does have benefits other, other than just, you know, feeling good. I mean, for those who care about such things. So I thought, I just, you know, I think that probably the next round, I mean, could be the final, but I mean, and I would be happy to share my comments on the draft, my redlining, but I will probably, they were pretty, I was typing like mad this afternoon and I just decided that I would stop, but.
Sure, so again, we discussed that at our last meeting and particularly around trying to make it feel less mandatory. And that's why we specifically added in the first, which is really the only one that's that kind of directs people, is to say that we will, that all official actions will strive to advance sustainability. That was the language we had discussed as a board to indicate that it's not that, you know, we have to in all situations because we know that there are situations where we can't and there are other things, other things to weigh. So the idea was to say that we will strive to, but the point is to make that be our plan that we will at least be thinking of these issues and striving to advance sustainability.
Well, that I, I understand that, but I, I don't know, there were some other places where I just thought that, and I also thought that, that I didn't know if there was a way to ease the burden on especially the town manager who's supposed to be obligated under this to provide an annual report of the status, which I guess could be incorporated into his, I don't know, we could, we set our goals, we could incorporate it into that, something like that. Oh, something else, hearings. I don't think that we should be referring to holding hearings on this policy. They can be information, they can be public meetings and they can be part of our regular meeting, but I don't, hearings has a real legal kind of significance and a certain formality associated with it. And, you know, I don't think that we want to call them hearings.
Okay, we can change that to public meetings.
But, you know, I can, I can try to pin down just the few points that really are matter to me. I was just sort of stream of consciousness redlining, so I was in a mood to procrastinate about doing certain other things, so I was editing stuff. And I decided to look at this, so, but I will, I will send what I have.
Okay.
Okay, in cleaner form.
Other members, Joan?
Yeah, in light of the water workshop we held a couple of weeks ago, I think if we could put some wording in here about in cooperation with the Acton Water District.
Yep, I think the place where it would make the most sense would be to put them in that point two, where it says that they would be involved in folks that are a part of developing our goals for sustainability. Otherwise, I mean, we're not, we cannot, you know, sort of have authority.
Right, I understand that, but as I said, in cooperation with or whatever the correct wording would be.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm happy to add them to that point two where I think it makes, it makes the most sense to include them.
And then I like Lucy's wildlife corridors, and I know we're working on that with our conservation acquisitions.
Right, and again, I think that gets to a, you know, a goal, right, that would be developed, you know, and again, the point of it is that you don't want to have a policy that then isn't as relevant in a year or two or five or 10 because there are new, you know, sustainability goals and measures and things that we're, we're working on. And so we want this to be a kind of more living document. And that's the point of having actual developing of the goals outside of the policy itself. But that's certainly, that and some of the other comments that were brought up are goals that, you know, I think would be ones that we should consider when we talk about developing the goals for the year.
Because they have a lot of wildlife walking through.
Yeah, sure. Yes, there's a lot of wildlife around. John?
In a, in a document like this, I really like to focus on the practical and the doable. And I was, you know, very impressed by Appendix A and the initiatives that have been undertaken and are in progress and to certainly, you know, build on that. And I think that should be the focus of the, you know, of the document. I'm very concerned that some of the language, if you're beginning in paragraphs two, three and four, really create a tremendous burden on the town manager and his staff and setting expectations that may well be very hard to meet. And, you know, future boards will have to, you know, live by this. And then just generally speaking, the expectations that the document creates, if you go in paragraph one, and I know you said you tampered it down a little bit.
Yep.
Every, you know, every official action of the board, including policies, budgets, bylaws, will strive to enhance, to advance sustainability. Exactly, you know, what is the expectation there for every, as John and his people struggle with a budget from year to year and, you know, making it work and living within our means, what is the expectation with regard to sustainability?
Sure.
That every budget is to advance sustainability when, you know, the overriding concern is the delivery of services within a set amount of money?
Well, so I think that that actually gets to the point of this policy itself, is that the point of having this is that we are stating as a town that we are striving to advance sustainability in all of our actions. And so when you're creating a budget, it doesn't mean that, you know, 100% of our budget's now going to go to buying, you know, solar panels, but it means that we are thinking about the impacts on the environment and on environmental sustainability when developing our budgets, when developing our bylaws and when purchasing something. So if we're, you know, considering building a fire station, we are considering the sustainability and environmental impacts of the fire station. It doesn't mean that every decision we make, and again, that's why we put the strive to language in there specifically, is that doesn't mean that every decision that we make will necessarily be the most environmentally efficient or sustainable decision because there are other considerations involved. There are financial considerations and, you know. Well, that's, so I guess, I guess maybe we should clear that up. I think part of it is maybe, we've been talking about this for, oh, probably two years now, that I think about it, close to two years now, so you're coming a little later into it, but that's sort of what the idea of creating this was. And originally, it actually was just, we just called it our sustainability policy. We clarified it that it was focused on environmental sustainability because there were concerns about having it be too broad and getting into the impacts of financial sustainability and other things like that, and we wanted to focus it. So it's like any other policy that we adopt in town, they deal with specific issues and they set out essentially what, what our aspirational goals are. And again, the point of having, of not having it just be a list of things that we've done and want to do is that that list is always going to be changing. And so the idea was just to have a document that sets out what our policy is and a process for developing and following up on, on those ideas. I mean, obviously, I talked to the former town manager about this. I think he knew he was retiring, so he was comfortable with the language in it so I could talk to the new town manager. But we did specifically put in there the town manager or manager's designee, and we had talked about the board or its designee because we had talked about considering whether we place some of these responsibilities with an existing group in town. So I know the Green Advisory Board would potentially be a good fit for that, having that role. And so that, so we wanted to work in some wiggle room for ourselves there as well, so that it's not just all on the town manager or all on the Board of Selectmen to advance these efforts and make sure that we're coming up with the goals and, you know, reporting on them. And again, we, we had said, well, I'll change the word hearings to meetings, but that there would be, the town manager would make a presentation and that that presentation can also serve as the public meeting that we have to discuss our efforts that year. And that public meeting could also be a part of the town manager's budget update or other goals update or other, you know, updates that we already have existing. But I think it's good every year to be able to say, here's what we've been working on, here's what we're doing. I mean, you know, I've noticed recently that after some of the natural gas disasters elsewhere, we've had a lot of people asking us about natural gas and not knowing or being aware of a lot of the work that we've been doing around this. And that's not for lack of trying, because we've had public meetings about it, Board of Selectmen meetings and larger meetings and things about that. But there is sometimes, like, I don't think most people would know all of these things on this list that we've done. And so it's good, you know, every year to kind of take a victory lap and talk about those things that we've done and the things that, you know, we're looking to do for the next year. But that's the idea of the, the policy in general. So it's not binding in a sense and why we put in that strive to language and I can make it even more, I can try to tone it down even more if we want, but I'm not sure how much without keeping, you know, with still keeping the purpose of a policy. Otherwise, there's no point in really having a policy if it doesn't say anything, so.
Well, Jen, I'll.
Sure.
No, I, since you mentioned the appendix, I, one of my suggested additions was, because there is a little sentence about reviewing and modifying the, the policy every, at least every five years, and I, I thought there should be a little bit more explicit, that should say that every year there's an update of appendix to reflect whatever the latest accomplishments are, because I think it should be a running tally of what the town is doing that sort of fits under the, the rubric of sustainability. It's just that I'm, I'm trying to take all these specifics and get to general, which is what we're all doing. And I, you know, I have some ideas about how to get there and also keep it relatively short and something that mere mortals will be able to understand because, you know, that was, that's been my big hangup from the beginning. I said, okay, does somebody have a definition for sustainability? And then you go on and you'll Google and you think, find out a zillion different things for corporate sustainability and municipal sustainability. And then you have the people who are, you know, saying, well, we want to be sustainable in our sustainability policy. I said, yep, but you're, you're not answering my question, so anyhow, but I, yeah, I did, and I still am, you know, I've seen a whole lot of different definitions, including some that are very, really, really vague and then some that are too specific. So this is, you know, it's an art and a science trying to come up with a good kind of concept. And I think it's important to grasp it so that people will look at it and understand we can't just assume that they get it, so.
You think our, our definition of sustainability in the kind of intro is not?
It's a really, I really, you know, on one hand, I think it's a lovely definition because I understand what it means, but I, I can just see somebody, you know, who, I don't know, just a regular person looking at it and saying, what? You know, so what am I supposed to do? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm working here at the highway department and I've got to figure out how to translate, anyhow, but I think, you know, I just think that there are, there is a way to capture it and I don't know if we're going to have to use the word environmentally friendly or something like term like that. But I, as I said, I will send you, and I have to do it soon because I've got stuff piling up, but I will send you my, a redlined thing with my thoughts about just all of this stuff. But I do, I don't think that the goal specifics, like the appendix should belong in the policy because it would just, it's better as an appendix, I like that.
Right, yeah.
That came up, I, I know that people have suggested that you have more things like that in the policy itself, but that isn't what the policy's supposed to do. It's supposed to say that there will be goals, but not to list them all out there because then it's no longer a longstanding policy. It's a one-year goal, so.
Right, okay, so it sounds like maybe trying to clarify a bit of the definition of the, of sustainability, which is in the third paragraph or is the third paragraph. And we can talk about the language in point one, but again, you know, I'm. Yeah, that's fine. I just want to set the expectation that it doesn't mean I'm going to come forward with a new draft that has accepted all of that. You know, I, I think we have to decide where, where we go with this, but, okay.
I will, I will send you comments to particularly with respect to number one.
Yep.
And, and four A. The word metrics troubled me, that what is that supposed to mean? You know, what is the expectation there?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's supposed to have, you know, actual metrics on the, you know, to have something that, right, yeah, essentially quantifiable data that you can look at to talk about the progress towards our goals for the year so that if we say, you know, we want to, you know, reduce our carbon footprint by X amount as opposed to just saying we want to reduce it in general. But yes, Mr. Manager.
If it's helpful, I'm happy to work on this and receive the comments from board members.
I'd, I'd like to take them.
To allow that I, so I can take the comments that, from we got from the website and whatever board members have, and if you, if you send those to my attention, I can work on something and bring it back to you soon.
Yeah, no, I understand that and I understand the concerns of me getting, I can't get comments from multiple members to then work on, which is why I think it'd be helpful to talk about them now because I'm slightly reluctant to give up. I appreciate it, Mr. Manager, but I don't, I'm not incredibly comfortable with giving up total control of it to, just because I worry about what the next, honestly, what the next draft will look like and if it will end. I want to make sure that we're still keeping with the original tent of the policy that we had talked about and agreed to as a board prior. So ideally, if you could share your comments with me tonight, I think I have a general sense of them, which is working on clearing up the definition of sustainability and really focusing on point one to make sure it doesn't feel burdensome, I suppose, changing references to hearings, to, to meetings, clarifying that the update every year would include an update to the appendix of, of what we have accomplished that year. And what was your concern around metrics? John, you think that's too?
Yeah, I would just say evaluation of projects should include, colon, any progress.
Progress, okay.
And to strike metrics on.
Okay. I can't get it from two people.
If I, if I may, I'll, I'll send you in the morning some suggested language on number one.
So I can only either get suggested language from you or from Janet and you can't, too, can't talk before sending it to me is the problem, so?
What would you like?
If you have suggested language now, I guess. If you haven't written out there now, I think it would be helpful to hear and let's just talk about now. That's the point of having this discussion in a, in a public meeting.
Why don't we hear from the audience and I'll?
Okay, that sounds good, yeah, and you guys can work on what that is. Okay, audience questions or comments?
Deborah Symes, 109 Concord Road. So, I got a few things. Kate, I just want to say that I appreciate your explanations and your, you know, sharing sort of the framework and rationale for how this was drafted. I think, this is so hard because I can't read without this, reading glasses, but I can't see you unless I get these on. All right, so I think the first thing I want to say is that, as you have said, that a policy is really, what's the zoom out, you know, on what we're trying to do? It's not about particular plans and goals. And I think that a policy, you know, I understand, John, that you, you know, pragmatics is good, are good. A policy also needs to be visionary. It has to be, I think, has to be aspirational. And the, the whole point from the get-go of this, at least as far as Jim and I, who worked on this early on and then Green Acton had somewhere to say along the line, the whole point was to say, what is the vision? It's wonderful that we've done all these things, but there's no unifying, forward-looking rationale for what we're doing. And so I want to really speak to the importance of preserving the, sort of the aspiration, whether it's idealism or not, the aspirational aspect of this. It's also important to remember that I think that, you know, in terms of metrics, that, you know, if you have goals, unless you have something to measure, whether you're making progress, it's really, as Katie was saying, kind of pointless because how do you know if, how do you know what progress even means if you have, don't have some data to, you know, with which to measure that progress? Let's see, for instance, not for instance, number one, every official action was of concern. Years ago, I don't even remember how many years ago, oh, before the Green Advisory Board got, Advisory Board got created, I wrote a big long thing to the Selectmen saying, you know, we need to be looking at sustainability issues. And one of the ways to think about that is that everything we do should pass through some filter. Doesn't mean, as Katie says, we're always going to do the 100% most optimal thing in terms of environmental stuff, but everything should pass through in addition to all the other kinds. stuff, but everything should pass through, in addition to all the other kinds of considerations, environmental slash sustainability considerations as well. So, you know, the, the proof is in the pudding, or whatever that expression is. I think the policy is guidance and direction. It doesn't mean that whatever entity is going actually to enact, you know, develop plans and enact those plans. It doesn't necessarily mean that, again, that every decision is going to go exactly perfectly, but it should mean, I think, that decisions need to have that component as part of, part of the, the thinking process and the decision-making process.
What component?
I'm sorry.
What use component?
Oh, that, um, that consideration of environmental and sustainability impact should be part of the consideration of any, you know, I don't care about, you know, if you're going to go buy a three-dollar item, I don't care, but, you know, of anything of, of particular note. Um, Janet, I knew you had concerns about, like, why are we doing this? And I think that that really, um, is set out in that first paragraph, "The Town of Acton acknowledges our crises." To your point, though, I think it might be good to add a sentence at the end of that paragraph that says something about, look, the benefits, you know, of having this policy are that our town will move and make decisions in a direction that will improve quality of, quality of life, improve public health, improve, you know, the resources that we have at our disposal, and not eclipse them for future generations.
That's, that's what it needs to say. You see, that, I'm not, I know what the purpose of it, but I'm just looking at this, uh, you know, a year from now, two years from now, whatever, down the road, people, or people even tomorrow, if we start, um, rolling this out, people are going to say, so why are you doing this?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And, and, yeah, so I think that it needs to refer back to Acton. I mean, I know the, the sun does not rise and set on Acton, but for some people it does. And so they want, you know, to know what the impact is positive for them, and, yeah.
So maybe a sentence about benefits that brings that home again. Um, duh, 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 duh. Sorry, I had so many little notes here. Um, oh, again, I think this, the phrase strive to, which I know was inserted, is, is a way of sort of softening that language a little bit. It's not like somebody's going to be standing over people with a, you know, a pole, making sure that everything is absolutely perfect. I don't want to lose the notion that we, you know, make environmental sustainability a consideration in everything the town does. And I think that might be all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Yep.
Hi, Jim Snyder-Grant again. Um, I was reflecting back on the process that led to this document, and, um, Katie, I, my, my, my timing here suggested, it actually hasn't been a full two years, but it's, it's been a while.
But it's, it's close.
Yeah. And when I look back at the first brainstorming, uh, that Green Acton did back in July of 2017, um, we started with a lot of pieces of the Acton 2020 Plan. Um, and the town's already adopted the Acton 2020 Plan, um, and it starts, the goal two, about ensuring environmental sustainability in the plan, is a, is a, a short but poetic definition, or a, a pointing towards what sustainability is. Uh, it goes, "We recognize that our health and well-being depend on protecting the web of life of which we are a part. Therefore, it is vital that we live and work here in a manner that supports that web and the well-being of people everywhere, including future Acton residents." So I wanted to pull up a couple of parts of that. First of all, um, the phrase web of life, it's, it's, you know, poetically compelling, but it's hard to understand exactly what it means. So in the definition of sustainability, we talk about, um, uh, the connection, in a system that has connections, in other words, a web. Um, it's not sustainable if you are, uh, if, if your plan is to use up something that has a finite supply, or if you're trying to, if you end up increasing the ply of something with no limit and nothing to do with that supply. So the two examples that are frequently used on a global scale are carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. You just, if you keep increasing that, you start boiling the planet away. Um, so, you know, we need plans that bring it back down. Uh, water, our groundwater, uh, which we depend on in Acton, our local groundwater, uh, we can't use it up. That would be, uh, an existential crisis for the survival of Acton that's of the same scale as the importance we take on, on health and safety. It's just sort of fundamentals of what we do in Acton. Um, so when we talk about taking environmental sustainability seriously in all our decisions, we're just saying, um, let's, let's not remove, uh, the foundations on which we are relying to continue. Um, so that's, that's why I think the definition of sustainability is the way it is, and why it comes from the language we've already accepted in the Acton 2020 Plan. Um, the only other comment I had was that I, I think that the concept of having the town manager wrestle with the input from the board and from the comments is a great one, because the plan calls for the town manager to be, you know, a, a key player in the implementation of this plan. So to have him work directly with the language and to, to, you know, make sure it really makes sense, I think is a powerful move. Um, I prefer that a selectman such as yourself, Katie, who's been involved in this for a long time, find some way of being involved in that process, but I understand you've got limits related to the open meeting law that you're going to have to deal with. Um, also, members of Green Acton, who wrote various iterations of the, of the original policy, are happy to, if, if it ends up working with the town manager's office, to meet with him at any point, um, to talk about, you know, why the language is there, or what the background is on any of the language. Um, so we're, we stand ready to continue to participate in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, and I don't mean to imply the town manager can or shouldn't be involved in this at all. I just want to make sure we're not losing something that I've worked hard on for a few years, and, uh, um, that we're still maintaining the policy as intended. Um, and it gets hard when I can't get comments outside of the public meeting to, to handle those, but if we talk about those here, and then the town manager and I work on it together, I'm very supportive of, of that. Yes.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. Um, I definitely support the idea of what Jim just said, and I recognize that, and I respect your wanting to, um, keep control of it, because you, you've been really the leader, um, here at the executive level on these topics, and I really respect that, and I appreciate that. Uh, maybe, uh, John could, without disclosing who said what to who, just be the representative of everybody else within this chain, um, and maybe work with you on that. But now I get to my comments. Um, I love what Jim and Deborah were saying, and thank you for all the hard work you've done, all of you, on this. Um, it's an aspirational document for sure. A policy always is. So we, um, to John's point, and Janet perhaps, the plan is where you, the rubber meets the road. The plan is where the specifics lie. The plan is what gets updated every year. I don't see this document as supposed to be having any great detail. Um, perhaps a separate group that actually does the definition, because I frankly would love to get involved in that, because I see fiscal, um, sustainability as critical to environmental sustainability. If we're going to dig ourselves deeper into debt, for example, we're not going to be in a position to help ourselves if we run out of important resources, et cetera. Uh, the idea of using up water, I noted how many, um, town, the working groups in the water workshop, the professionals and the officials, the solutions were largely, go find more water if we run out of water. And in the public side, it was thirteen people, fourteen people, I can't remember, the solutions were, let's live within our means. So I thought that was really an, an important distinction that I think is important for a policy. Um, I would like very much not to see this water down any, anymore, but I understand that perhaps some of the specifics could be taken out and put into the set of goals that then would be updated every year. Um, I'd also like to make note that this is just a policy, and to, to John said, oh, no, the future boards will have to live with. No, the policies are policies, and they're done at the board level, so the board can ignore it, or revise it, or whatever they want. Um, and let's see, I think I said everything. Oh, just metrics. I love metrics, and, you know, if you can't, you can't manage what you can't measure. So thank you very much for spending so much time on this, because if, if you didn't care, you wouldn't be spending all this time on it. Um, I think that the, addressing the housing, I think, I had urged to put housing in the first one, um, and, and it didn't make it into the first cuts, um, on the Green Acton side. So I hope that we do address housing in an environmentally sustainable way. Um, and of course, that's a plug for the Housing Trust and the Condo Buy Down program. But, uh, that's at the end of my comments, and I thank you again for doing this really important work, because if we, Washington's never going to save us, and I, I have my doubts about the State House. And so I think that our work at the municipal level is where we shine as, as, as a society and a community. And what we do here, frankly, I bring that to the regional meetings of the environmentalists that meet once a month, and we trade on what their towns are doing. And when we do something, and we say, well, gosh, Acton's doing it, they're all excited, and they bring that to their towns. So it's a good idea spread, and I think that this is really showing that, that we can be an environmental leader in Acton without breaking the bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure.
I just, I just want to make clear that I think John Benson and I are pretty aware of what a policy is, and that we're, when we're picking on certain details, it's not because we want more detail in it, we want different, um, things in the draft. Um, it's a matter of wording and clarity, frankly, and, and I, well, at least, maybe I should be speaking for myself, but, I mean, it's just, I, you know, to suggest that it's a policy and we're tuned down in the weeds, not understanding that that isn't what we're trying to do in doing and making suggestions about proposed edits. It's to improve clarity and understanding for the audience that we know is out there. That is not necessarily going to be Green Acton, it's going to be just people who are going to look at this thing, and they have to say it makes sense. And, you know, and understand from, based on the appendix A, that, oh, yeah, this is consistent. But, you know, if you took appendix A away, the people should still be able to envision all the stuff that's in appendix A by reading the policy. And that's what I am trying to do. Um, so anyhow, that's, just wanted to make clear. I know very well it's policy and what a policy is supposed to do, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't think that your comments were. I, I was reacting more to some of the comments we'd received, um, in, in response through the form, that wanted specific things in there that really are things that should be in the goals part of the plan that we develop and not in the policy itself. And that, again, the policy is supposed to be higher level, but, yes, Dan.
John?
Yeah, just quickly, you know, um, I, I, I concur with Janet, and it's just, it's both an aspirational document and a document that sets measures and requirements on the manager and on the selectmen. And words matter, and words count, and what words mean. Um, you would, Dan would know, and Janet would know, and Nina would know, where, you know, you wind up in court on, you know, paragraphs and sentences of kind of general language, and, you know, things really come back to bite you, and, you know, in surprising ways. And I, we have just room to be clear enough here that we all know what we're buying into. That's, I think, all we're, we're really talking about. Nothing to do with the aspirational and the goodness of this.
Sure. And I just want to be clear, I don't think that words don't matter, and, and that there's not room for improvement. But the point is also that we have been talking about this for a while, and it, and this is at least the third iteration of this, which has been responsive to comments from the board members. Um, and I have some proposed changes as well, but I don't, you know, again, I, I struggle with moving completely away from what we have been working to do with this policy that has been supported in, in concept and in earlier drafts by the board. So that's my point. Danny?
Yeah. Uh, Danny Factor 11 Davis Road, um, I, I want to say something very positive here. I'm, I mean, I moved to Acton in 2002, and I think at that time, I could not imagine this discussion, uh, taking place. And I just think it's, it's absolutely wonderful that the board has, uh, you know, made this its number one priority at one point. Um, and just the amount of time that's been devoted to discussing this, I think is a, is an absolute triumph. I think we, we should be very proud. I've bragged already to other people who live outside of town that our town has prioritized this first. I want to give particular credit to, um, Katie for being a leader in this. Uh, I think the, really the, the center point of the policy, um, is the part where it says that, uh, that we look at sustainability when we look at every decision that we make. Uh, I would analogize it to, one of the things, I, I also brag to people who live outside the region when I describe town meeting, is the fact that the way we make a decision is that we first have a policy-oriented board, which is the Board of Selectmen, and then a town meeting, who do we look to? We have this other board, this other opinion, which is the Finance Committee. And every decision that we make runs through that filter, because it would be irresponsible, um, to not take into account that other financial perspective before making the decision. So essentially, I think what this adds is that third perspective, which is just as important, that we look at our policy, we look at our finances, and then we look at our health. Um, and that's, you know, ultimately what this is about, the health of people, um, and, uh, you know, the health of our planet, and the part that resides within Acton in our region. So I think what we're doing is no less responsible than what we do when we pass our decisions through the filter of a Finance Committee. Uh, and I do empathize with the comments that have been made about the practicality, about the sitting on somebody's desk and how we're going to, um, deal with this, and what John says about how some of these decisions could end up giving us, um, a little bit of a bite. But I think the flip side of that is that the reason we're having to come up with this policy is that, hopefully, given what we know about the science, hopefully, we're scared. Hopefully, we're all terrified about what could happen if we don't implement this. So when we talk about, you know, as John says, you know, being bit surprisingly, um, uh, you know, by this, uh, by this situation, I think we have to also look at our fears also. I, I almost, I almost was tempted to ask very briefly, and I'm not going to do it because of time, and maybe it can be some homework to think about for next time. Uh, what is, you know, we've, we've heard about the fears that people have about the administrative roadblocks that a policy like this could create, but what are the fears that people have if we wouldn't have a sustainability policy, or if the policy isn't strong enough? What are our fears about what could happen to, uh, the people and the health of our town if we don't have that, you know, as well? So I, I hope everybody is, is thinking about this and is a little, um, scared of what might happen if we don't implement a, a strong policy such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Hello, I'm Kim Castens from 294 Pope Road, um, and I also wanted to thank Katie and the other selectmen for putting so much time and effort for initiating this in the first place, and putting so much time and effort into it, and for providing the opportunity for the public to comment through the, um, through the public forum. And also, thank you for adding the Acton Water District into the list of stakeholders. I think that's a great idea. Um, I, unlike Danny, I haven't lived in this town that long, only six years, and I didn't research the town carefully before I moved here. And I have to say that I am absolutely thrilled to find that I have landed in a town that is taking environmental sustainability so seriously at the policy level, not just at the level of individuals. So I'm really thankful for that. And in terms of thinking about what should be in here, I guess my only comment is to think about what kind of Acton you want to have for your children and your grandchildren. That's what sustainability, that's at the heart of sustainability, is thinking about future generations. So I know several of you have grandchildren or children, and just one thing to put, you know, one thing to put in the scale as you think about this is, um, what do you want Acton to look like as far as its waterways, as far as its vegetation, its wildlife, its air quality, its water quality, um, as they grow up?
Thank you, Kim. Okay, Deborah, again.
Sorry, super quick. I want to be clear that I was casting no aspersions on people's understanding about what policy is. Um, honestly, I get that you get it. Um, and the thing I quickly, I want to say is that I think that, again, because this is policy, um, what we're saying when we talk about metrics, for instance, is metrics are a good idea. We're not saying, you know, every single thing is going to be beholden, you know, to some metrics that somebody invents. All of this is going to be, you know, through whatever entity gets designated, all of the goals and the objectives and how we get there are going to be designed. And so, as I say, it's really how that piece unfolds, I think, is where, um, language is important everywhere, God knows, but I think that that's the place where- everywhere, God knows, but I think that that's the place where concerns about what are we going to be held to really, are, you know, are the place where that gets, where that makes sense. Yeah, that, thanks.
Thanks, Deborah. You look like you've got something written down.
I'm sure.
I'm sure, you want me to take it? So I was thinking, okay. What's the second word here?
Considerations of.
Yeah, no, no, I guess the third, fourth roots.
Sustainability.
Oh, okay, thank you, oh, I see, sorry. Okay, so this is your proposal for number one.
Yeah, right, is a stronger, shall than will.
Right, yeah, so, so John's proposing to say, in number one, considerations of sustainability shall be taken into account in official actions of the Town of Acton in
The areas.
The areas of policy, budgeting, bylaws, and purchasing decisions. And that was actually similar, I had thought of saying something along the lines of, the Town of Acton, because I think every official action maybe sounds frightening, but the Town of Acton, in its actions, including policies, budgets, bylaws, and purchasing decisions, will consider and either strive for or work for advancing sustainability. So that would be the other way I thought about.
Just, but this, the word I was considering was every.
Every, yeah, so maybe, okay, so maybe if.
I was using considerations of sustainability, because that's what.
Yeah, and I like having both consider and, yeah, I like having both consider and strive, striving or working, if that seems less.
I did the same, I was looking at my edits, and I said, "The Town of Acton," I left out the, every action, I just said, "The town action," blah, 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 anyhow.
Okay, yeah, so the Town of Acton, in its actions, including these things, will consider and strive to advance sustainability?
In its policy.
Yeah. Does that sound, okay, more reasonable, or more along what, I think what we're saying and what I'm hearing from both of you is just clarifying what, so it's a little easier to understand what this really means. And I also, so I made a note about adding the Acton Water District, I've made a note about kind of maybe making more reader-friendly that definition of sustainability and adding a sentence, like Deborah said, to that second paragraph. I've added notes about changing hearings to meetings, and then I think one question I had is if there's concerns about the requirements around metrics and financial analysis, I'm comfortable if maybe those are developed in the plan and not necessarily in the policy itself, so essentially just leaving four at the end of four, at the end of fulfill this requirement and not having the other aspects of it, because I think those are things that would be addressed in the plan. Right, that's my point of this, is trying to keep it as simple as possible, because honestly, again, I think the main thrust of this is to have a aspirational policy and goal, and then getting into some of the weeds of developing the goals and practicalities of it as laid out in this, in this plan.
I mean, it really, it's just, I think it's good to, it has to be aspirational, because, you know, that's why you have it, but then, you know, I think that it also has to make sense
Right.
to a broad range of people, and I'm not saying that only, you know, you have to be very literate or something like that, but, you know, I mean, they're very pragmatic people, I'm pragmatic too, and, you know, it has to make sense to people who just have to, have to execute on it, and so, yeah.
Tara, I'm not going to take any more public comment, because I think we're at the point of having heard from the public, and so what I think makes the most sense at this point is perhaps if I send a new draft to John with, Town Manager John, I tell people you have to hear if I'm saying the H in John or not, and that's how you know which one I'm talking about. So John, I will send to him my edits based on the thing that we talked about, and if folks have other ones, but, you know, again, not, not completely rewording this, but again, if we're removing kind of four after, removing essentially four A and B, and then making some of those changes to one that we discussed and some of the other minor ones, I will send those along. Now, let me ask this, Nina, because those are ones that we have discussed here, can I send that draft out to the board and ask people to send comments on that to John Manjari?
As long as the comments go from the individual board members.
To the town manager, right.
And then at the point that another iteration is created, he can share that with you as long as he shares with the public as well as the city.
Got it, okay, perfect. I think that makes sense.
Since in the board pack.
Right.
The board pack gets to the public at the same time that you all saw the draft, that would be appropriate under the bold decision.
Okay, thank you for staying on top of all that. Okay, so I will make edits based on what we discussed, I'm going to send that back out to the board, and board members can send edits to John Manjari, who will, if there are other edits, maybe work on that, and then bring another draft. Does that sound okay, John, or do you have concerns?
That sounds great. If this is the opportunity to say things about this policy, I'd like that.
Yes, certainly.
So I'm very invested in the goal-setting process that we undertake every year. This year, we did it in the end of July, and I'd really like to consolidate goal-setting processes and maybe just have one, and I wonder if you'd be willing to modify item number?
Two.
Two, rather than saying, "Within one year of this policy," just say, "As part of the annual goal-setting process."
Sure.
That way, we don't have two different goal-setting exercises.
Yeah, I think the only thing is that this process envisions something involving additional stakeholders, rather than the board's goal-setting process that is more focused on just the board members, but, you know, if there's ways to think about how to do that, I mean, the timeline really was just to have something so this doesn't sit and not do anything, so I think if we say, you know, annually, or, you know, something like that, but I think we could think through what that could look like, or how to streamline those processes so they aren't burdensome and two separate, you know, completely separate things. Okay.
Just a point of order.
Sure.
Just, it's a request for just up to five more minutes of public comment, only because after the public comment, John did propose a change in wording, which I do think is substantive, and the public did not have the opportunity to comment on that, I wouldn't, I don't think, I don't see a lot of hands up, but.
The public will have time to comment, because we are going to send out another version of this draft, so it, so this is not, I do not envision this being the end at all of public comment on this, and we will discuss this at another open meeting, and I'd like to get, we've got a number of other items on here, so I'd like to move on. I think, at this point, I'm talking about sort of the board's proposed next changes to this draft, and I'll, we'll take public comment on that at the next version, but I appreciate that. Okay, so I will work on that, it goes in my keepspile, okay. Thank you all. All right, item number five, Board to Discuss Appraisal of 252 to 256 Main Street. So we had a executive session prior to this meeting, and at that executive session, based on our discussion, we decided that at this point, we do not foresee negotiating with or pursuing negotiations with the owners of that parcel, and therefore voted to release the appraisal, so we will be making that public. I don't know if there is anything else we wanted to add, but I think that, okay. Do you have a question?
Yes, so if there, so we'll be getting the appraisal.
Yes, we voted to make that public, yeah.
Thank you, and so then, if a group of people want to come forward to propose a plan to buy the parcels, what would be the process for doing that?
I mean, probably, I guess, contact the town manager initially?
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and item number six is to review complaints and discussion of board's responses to open meeting law complaints filed by Steve Ballard on October 2nd, 4th, 5th, and 10th, and so we have Nina here with us tonight related to those. So we have received a number of complaints, open meeting law complaints. The first thing I want to say is that anybody is allowed to make an open meeting law complaint, it does not mean that there are merits to the open meeting law complaint, and in fact, our responses that are drafted here tonight for the board to discuss are responses indicating that we believe that there are not merits to these open meeting law complaints, so just to clarify that for the public, making one does not mean that it in fact happened the way that it was stated. So we have, Nina, do you want to go through, how do you, how do you want to do this? Do you want to just briefly talk about what these are, or, and then have the board just review the proposed responses and provide any comment on them?
Sure, so I think it makes sense to back.
Can you just use your, sorry?
Sorry, I think it makes sense to back up and talk a little bit about where we are to set the stage and organize this a little bit. There was one complaint that was received, the board discussed at its last meeting on October 1st, that response, that review of the complaint as well as the board's response has gone out to the AG's office. Given the number of complaints, I at least have started to refer to them as open meeting law complaints, one, two, three, four, and five. So open meeting law complaint and response one have gone out. Again, as Katie mentioned, there's allegations in that complaint of an improper executive session, both procedure and purpose. After review, the board as well as Town Council's office didn't find any violation of the open meeting law for the September 17th executive session. The subsequent four complaints all involve, at some level, complaints stemming back to that original September 17th board meeting as well, where they are separate complaints, although many overlap in the, in substance and certainly the topic of the meeting. We do recommend that the board respond to each of them separately. Town Council's office has provided a draft to you all in response to each of the numbered At this point, some corrections do need to be made, or revisions do need to be made to the proposed responses that you have received already for open meeting law complaints, two, three, four, and five, to reflect the vote that you've taken earlier tonight. A number of the draft responses talks about releasing the appraisal when the purpose of the executive session is no longer valid. At this point, you have voted to release that appraisal, so some updating needs to be made after tonight's meeting to that, as well as clarifying, in one of the responses, the role of Labor Council. But other than that, I'm happy to summarize the complaints one by one and the proposed responses, and you all can certainly provide comments to Katie now, and then, as you did with the first open meeting law complaint, I think delegate to Katie to finalize the board's response, where, again, a number of administrative and clerical revisions need to be made after tonight's meeting. Does that sound good, Madam Chairman?
Yes, and I'm also going to clarify that we're not going to be taking public comment prior to the board potentially voting to provide that authorization, because I think this is a discussion of the board's responses to these, and so it's really a matter for the board. We will take public comment if there are questions about these after, but not on our specific, the specifics of our responses, so that's the only thing. And with that.
Moving on to briefly, open meeting law complaint number two, the allegation was that the board failed to timely approve the open meeting law session of its May 7th meeting. That came to light, apparently, during the October 1st meeting, a number of older board minutes were reviewed and approved at that point. The complainant, Mr. Ballard, alleges that these are violations of the open meeting law by not approving them within 30 days. In our review, there were, it is certainly the board's standard practice to approve, review and approve all open session minutes within 30 days of a regular meeting. That did not happen for the May 7th meeting, as Mr. Ballard alleges. In the review, the board also, the town also found that they had not been approved for the May 21st meeting. The 30 days is a guideline from the Attorney General's Office, it is not a hard and fast rule, and there can be good cause for needing more time to approve minutes of a board. It was certainly our feeling in looking at past decisions of the Attorney General's Office that extenuating circumstances right in the same time period that this board would have been reviewing and approving those minutes certainly provides good cause for extending beyond those 30 days. It caught its error in not doing them timely itself, both for the May 7th as well as the May 21st before they were pointed out by anyone. The extenuating circumstances that I'm referring to are the retirement of the longtime town manager right at the same time, and the turnover in administration in the town manager's office, that is certainly likely, understandable administrative void there for a period of time, as well as, I believe, the clerk of the board was absent during the time period when the board would have timely approved the minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the response to open meeting law complaint Open meeting law complaint three. This complaint was filed on October 4th, again, by Mr. Ballard. The complaint alleges that the board's entry into executive session for purpose number three was improper, for purpose number six was improper, and even if the purposes were valid, the originally stated purposes were not specific enough on the agenda to, in light of the time, I would just say that primarily the response, the allegations here and the responses here dovetail right off of the open meeting law complaint number one. It is essentially a more specific allegation of, it's the first open meeting law complaint, which is, it was improper for the board to enter into executive session to generally discuss collective bargaining. We clarified in the proposed response for you all that that is not, in fact, what the board was doing, it was not to generally discuss collective bargaining, and it was not just to meet with council. It, in fact, was to discuss a negotiating position across all, across all the unions with respect to particular legal changes. The, again, the second allegation was improper purpose for entering to executive session with respect to the Kmart parcel. Again, we have clarified that, contrary to Mr. Ballard's allegations about the need for active negotiations to be ongoing in order to withhold an appraisal from public discussion and disbursement under the public records law, that there is no such requirement in the open meeting law. And then, again, we dispute that the notice was at all deficient. The town has been very diligent in ensuring the, both Lisa and John, that the meeting law, the executive session meeting notices are compliant at all times. That is open meeting law complaint three, and the proposed response, which is a finding of. of no violation. Does anyone have any questions on open meeting law three? Open meeting law complaint four, filed by Mr. Ballard after hours on October 4th, also dating it for our purposes, October 5th. The allegation of Octo, of open meeting law complaint four is that the board, in its response to open meeting law complaint one, inappropriately delegated the task of responding to the open meeting law complaint to town council's office, where town council provided a draft response for the board to consider, which the board then adopted. As should be evident from the fact that I've now provided you four additional drafts that you're considering tonight, we do not find that to be a violation of the open meeting law. It is certainly true that the board cannot, the board must meet and discuss the allegations and discuss its response, and, and cannot delegate beforehand, town council to respond to all open meeting law complaints without separately meeting. What Acton did, of course, was completely different than that. Town council was involved in reviewing the allegations and providing with you a proposed draft, but that proposed response comes from the board. It doesn't come from town council's office, and it is considered in full by the board in open session prior to it being sent there. It's very different than open meeting law violations that have been found for boards that simply, in one case, town council wrote a response to be, in order to be within the 14 days, and then the board met after the response went out, and the board retroactively adopted town council's position. That's a violation. That is not the process that you all have undertaken. So we don't find any violation with respect to the process you all have undertaken in considering these complaints, and the proposed response has a number of attorney general opinions cited to back up that conclusion. Does anyone have any questions with respect to the allegations or the response for open meeting law complaint four? Open meeting law complaint five, received after hours, October 10th, October 11th. It is fairly recent. I'm going to read from this because there is quite a list of allegations, and where it was received only days ago, I don't know them as well as I know the other ones. So. Open meeting law complaint number five, allegations are as follows. That the board did not reconvene in open session following executive session. The board did not take a recorded roll call vote to enter into executive session. The meeting notice and agenda gave inadequate notice of the board's purposes for entering executive session under purpose three. That's the collective bargaining purpose. Its entry into executive session under purpose three was improper. It is unjustly, I'm editing as my own letter as I'm, as I sit. It is unjustly withholding executive session meeting minutes under purpose three. It engaged council in executive session without listing the same as an attendee of the meeting in the board's open session minutes. Its entry into executive session under purpose six, again, the consideration of the purpose of the, the consideration of the purchase of the Kmart parcel was improper. The meeting notice and agenda gave inadequate notice of the board's purposes for entering into executive session under purpose six, and it is unjustly withholding executive session meeting minutes under per, purchase six. I will take them each in order. The allegation that the board did not reconvene in open session following executive session is not accurate. The board took votes to enter and to exit executive session and then opened the door and reconvened open session. The minutes do not reflect using the exact verbiage of reconvening open session. However, we found that that is not a per se violation of the open meeting law. It was clear to all in attendance and clear from the minutes that open session was convening following the executive session. It did not take a recorded roll call vote to enter into executive session. This allegation is based on the fact that in the minutes, the roll call vote is reflected as all ayes or all yeses. That allegation is again incorrect. As they always do, the board did take a roll call vote to enter into and to exit executive session. The assistant for the board simply was using shorthand when she reflected that they were all ayes, but the roll call vote did in fact take place, and I know that members of the board would be willing to sign an affidavit as such if required by the Attorney General's office. The purpose of the open meeting law, the roll call vote component of the open meeting law is so that the vote can, the members of the public can understand the way each member voted. I believe that the town where it was all ayes thought that they were certainly following the spirit and letter of the law, where anyone can decipher from the face of the minutes themselves whether or not, or how a member voted based on the attendance and the fact that the vote was unanimous. The third allegation was that the meeting notice and agenda gave inadequate notice for the board's purpose. Again, the, the next three items all involve the entry and notice and purpose of entering into executive session to discuss potential impacts of a case on your collective bargaining position of the town. Those three allegations are rehashed in, in, again, some additional detail in the open meeting law complaint five. However, the town's response to those allegations remain the same. It was adequate notice, it was adequate purpose, and it was adequate procedure. The next three, or, or allegation number six is that the board engaged council in executive session without listing the same as an attendee. I believe that is an error on the understanding of town council's office. I do not believe Labor Council was actually in the meeting with you, but rather, the town manager was relaying legal advice from Labor Council. So the minutes were accurate in that case, and we will make sure the drafts of our responses that discuss the involvement of Labor Council make very clear that while Labor Council's advice was included, Labor Council himself was not present. Allegations seven, eight, and nine of open meeting law complaint five all involve the executive session held on September 17th for purpose number six. Again, that is the appraisal with respect to the Kmart parcel, as we said, for purpose number three. The entry into the notice of and the procedure used before, during, and after that executive session were all proper with respect to purpose number six, and we have relayed as much to the Attorney General and set forth for you the proposed response with, with respect to his specific concerns raised in his most recent open meeting law complaint. That is open meeting law complaint five. Anything? Questions? Janet?
How much time has it taken to put together all these, go through all the complaints and to put together the responses? Just rough ballpark. I'm just curious how much time this has consumed. Obviously, it costs us money, but you know.
It has taken quite a bit of time. I, I believe it's taken nearly 20 hours of town council resources. I can get a more precise figure for you, but I looked at it earlier today. I have it in my phone, and I can get it for you, but I believe it's around 20 hours or so.
All right, any other comments from board members on any of these responses or changes that you want?
Thank you, Nina, for a very thorough and comprehensive job. Very frustrating.
Yes. So then, do we have a motion to authorize me to finalize with council the responses and send these to the Attorney General?
Yes, so moved.
Okay. So John moved and Joan seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and I echo my thanks, Nina, on that. And I said that afterwards, I would take questions not related to the board's responses, but if there are questions about the open meeting law complaints. Okay, so.
No, I have a question.
Okay.
So, relative to when, and, you know, again, for the record, I didn't do this. The, from what I understand, you've got to deliberate on the draft response before it gets sent out as a formal response. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what your question is. The draft responses, we are discussing the draft responses tonight, and the board just voted to authorize me to finalize those responses before sending them to the Attorney General.
Okay, so there's been no official response yet?
Not on complaints two through five. There was an official response on complaint one, which was discussed at, and again, a similar vote was taken at our October 1st meeting.
And those drafts were provided for that meeting to the public?
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, and these drafts are all in the DocuShare as well. Okay, seeing nothing else, we will move on. Thank you very much for coming, Nina. So, the last item is number seven, the board discussed the gift distribution amount for the Recreation Department, and I am trying to find the memo on that. I have swept it up in something else. Mr. Manager, do you want to introduce this?
Yes. The, the project on, excuse me, I'm just looking up. The 21 market rate units that are being built by Mr. Gallagher, I believe is the name of the developer, in South Acton near Jones Field. Part of that approval required that the builder contribute, excuse me, the total of $60,300 towards, as written in the decision, it says, towards the sidewalk fund and/or recreation facility improvements and/or infrastructure improvements in the vicinity, in the vicinity of the project. And so those, that project is underway. We have not received all of the payments yet because they are to be provided once the units are completed, but the request before you tonight is from the Recreation Commission to ask you to set aside $30,000 or 50% of those contributions towards the improvements plan at Jones Field.
Yeah, and as the Rec Commission liaison, I unfortunately wasn't able to make it to the meeting where they took this vote. I think that was the one shortly after our last meeting when I was feeling under the weather. But they are, they have been working on plans and proposals for updating Jones Field Playground and to have a neighborhood group that's working on this, and they've been, as you've seen when we've accepted various donations, collecting donations for this, but as part of that are planning to apply for a CPA grant related to that and, and essentially want to know how much they should apply for, because there had also been discussion of some of this gift fund being used for the Jones Field Playground project. And so without knowing how much of that is going to this project, they were unsure how much to ask for. I think the, one caveat is that we haven't had way in specifically from the, I believe, Planning Department did kind of discuss with Recreation, and they've all agreed to this, is my understanding, but I, I don't think like the sidewalk committee has necessarily weighed in on this, so that would be one thing if we wanted to consider that, but we do, you know, it, again, the Rec Commission is planning to make a proposal to the CPA, and so they need to get working on that soon. I think that actually comes before us before, at our next meeting, so there is a bit of a timing issue there. And it wasn't specifically laid out in the decision about what percent of any of this would go to which of those funds that we had indicated in the decision. So now it's up to us to, to decide that, but that's some of the additional background from my understanding from the Rec Commission. Janet?
Well, I'm, I'll just make a motion, but people who have different opinions can, I just moved to recommend the distribution in accordance with what the recommendation of Recreation and whoever else has had input in the material that was in our packet, so, which I don't have before me.
Okay, so a motion to approve the recommendation from Janet. Is there a second? John seconds, okay. Other discussions? Either of you have any burning thoughts on this? You're comfortable with it? Any discussions from the audience? Our audience, one feels comfortable with this? Okay, then all those in favor of approving the recommendation from the Recreation Department, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, last item is our consent agenda, so I will read through this. Please hold anything that you would say, say hold on anything that you would like held. Number eight, disclosure by non-elected municipal employee Ray Yakubi. Number nine, proposed 2019 meeting calendar. Number 10, right-of-way street cut permits. Number 11, private way plowing fees. Number 12, meeting minutes for May 21st, September 20, September 17th, and October 1st, 2018.
Hold with respect to September 17th.
Okay. Oh, it's.
No.
Right, with the public, right, right, yes.
To Mr. Rosen's comments.
You're correct, sorry. I was writing, hold next to all of these. Okay. Thank you. And then, number 13, executive session minutes for September 17th and October 1st, 2018, which I will hold. Number 14, one-day alcohol beverage license, I apologize, Casenia Lomaken Nagog Woods Clubhouse, November 3rd, 2018. Number 15, committee appointment, Steve Trimble, Recreation Commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2021. Number 16, committee appointment, Judith Romatelli, Acton Boxborough Cultural Council, term to expire June 30th, 2021. Number 17, accept gift Acton Fire, Acton Fire Department, a gift totaling $5,000 from the Digital Credit Union. Number 18, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift totaling $4,300 from Mrs. Gail Greenley to purchase an indoor portable stage for the Recreation Department. Number 19, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift totaling $364.19 from various donors to fund a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Okay, so John, you held number 12 related to the public or the open meeting minutes of September 17th.
Yes, this goes to comments we received from Mr. Barry Rosen to amend what was in the minutes to more accurately reflect what he said at the meeting, and I have taken his comments and prepared a new paragraph, which I will give to Lisa.
Okay, and everybody saw those comments as they came to the Board of Suckman, but they were related to some of the Powder Mill Place discussion. Okay, so can we have perhaps a separate motion on this item to approve the minutes with the proposed changes to September 17th?
Yeah, I move to approve the open session minutes of September 17th with the changes that Mr. Benson has incorporated based on Mr. Rosen's comments.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and then 13, I didn't get to read these until late and had a few edits that I wanted to send back on the minutes, so I'd like to hold those, and we can vote them at our next meeting.
I move to approve consent agenda items eight through 11 and 14 through 19. All right, well, move to approve consent agenda items eight through 11, item 12 as to the minutes, open session minutes for May 21 and October 1st, and items 14 through 19.
Okay, Janet made the motion. Joan seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Wonderful, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Joan moves. Janet seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you all very much.